We'll call the meeting to order. Row call, please.
Chad Gerhart.
Here.
Jeanette Johnson.
Here.
Terry Robinson.
Here.
Rosa Cavazas.
Present.
Dan Bryan.
Here.
Myron Line Wetter.
Here.
With six members present, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Have there been any communications from the public to staff?
Do the welcome first. If you want to do this, yeah, before we get into that.
Do that first, all right. Tonight's meeting is a work session only. We thank you to the public who's here in attendance. It is appreciated. Please note, we will allow public comment only during the designated time on the agenda. We will not have a specific time for public comment or interaction in regards to tonight's work session on solar energy conversion systems. The purpose of the work session is to allow the commissioners to discuss and brainstorm. We will have additional work sessions and time for a public hearing at a later date. Comments can also be emailed to planning@snco.us. And now I can ask, have there been any communications from public to staff?
We did receive one email after we sent out, because what we did, if many of you recall, as a part of this process to begin with, we had a lot of communication with the public during the discussions on a moratorium and ban. So we have an email list or mailing list of people who were interested in being able to participate. We do have a few people who have reached out to us on occasion over the last few months since the moratorium was passed on solar. And so we did send out a mass email to everyone who had asked to be a part of that list and let them know that tonight's meeting was happening. And then we have published the agenda online. But anyways, in response to that, we did get one email from Ms. Denning, Denham. I'm sorry, I don't have the email in front of me, so I have her name wrong. But we did get an email. And she just wanted to remind all of the planning commissioners that there was a petition that was circulated and there were a number of people who had signed that petition who were against both wind and solar utility. And they wanted you to just keep that into consideration. And actually, as we go through some of this, I'm going to grab her email because she did have some input on a few items that are relevant in regards to things that we discussed tonight with setbacks and distances from different locations. So I will grab that here in just a second. But that's the only communication that we received on, back from anybody.
Thank you. Any ex parte communications by members of the commission? None? Any declaration of conflict of interest by members of the commission? Zoning and subdivision items, there are none, correct? And so it is time for public comment on non-agenda planning and zoning items. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the commission?
Okay.
All right. Then we'll have a discussion of planning-related issues in our work session.
Yeah, so, whoops, sorry. So the only item that we're discussing today is solar energy conversion systems. And so I'm going to reduce that and pull up a sheet that I have as a running Word document that I've been working on as I make notes and look at various regulations and things that I think that we need to discuss. And let me make this bigger. So we can see it, because I cannot see it. Okay, so as a whole, you guys are going to have to make some decisions. Tonight, you can make votes and you can make decisions about how you're wanting things to move forward. What that means is not that what you have decided tonight is how it's going to be. It is these are the processes that we're taking and the decisions that we're making as we are putting the draft together. So let's call them kind of preliminary votes. You know, first, I think that you guys should, as a whole, make a vote that you are going to allow solar energy systems in Shawnee County. And then as we move forward, we will define, you know, what exactly does that mean? How big? What are the setbacks? You know, and so each of those little categories we're going to discuss once you have directed it. Because if someone makes a motion here tonight that we don't want to have regulations or that we want to ban solar, then that would kind of end the topic and we would move down a different route. If the route is that we would like to have regulations that define what we're going to do with solar energy conversion systems, I think we should have that set out first. And then we will start going down each of the various categories that we can put into play in regards to these regulations. Now, as I said, these are preliminary votes. You don't make any final decisions today. What you do is you start taking those steps to put a packet together as a whole, which we then, at the end, will end up having a public hearing on. And we'll do it like we did with the moratorium. We may not be able to have it here, just kind of depending on the input that we're getting from the public. We may have to move it to a different location. We would have a big public hearing where you would hear the specifics of a ban of regulations, of the regulations that we've drafted. And then once you've made a motion and approved or denied whatever it is that you do with that, then that would go on to the BCC. But we do have to make some decisions in the meantime to help you guys move forward so that not only the public knows kind of the route that we're going, but also I know as I'm drafting stuff and presenting things to you what it is that we're looking to do or if we need to bring topics in from other people, discussions, legal discussions or other experts that you may want to have come in and discuss. So I think off the bat, my first request would be, do you as a planning commission want to move forward with solar regulations for the solar energy conversion systems? And I will turn it over to you to have that initial discussion on what we think we want to do.
I move that we continue to have discussion on solar.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we continue to have discussions on solar energy systems. Any discussion at this point?
So are we voting on, what are we voting on here? Are we voting on that we're moving forward to write regulations?
That's the way, I will let Terry explain his motion, but I believe that that's what he was motioning.
Yeah, is to continue to look into those items that we would require for somebody who would be asking to put in a solar farm. And I would assume there's battery storage that goes with that system.
So inside of that vote, would we be voting on writing a set of regulations? Or are we voting, or could that also encompass placing it under a zoning class? And just regulating as a CUP?
My motion is just a discussion. So that we're moving, yeah, moving forward in discussion on how we would go about that.
Okay, so my understanding then would be that your motion is we would move forward in writing regulations, no matter what those regulations may be or how we move forward with that, that we would be drafting regulations for the allowance of solar energy conversion systems.
That is correct.
Okay.
But could that regulation be that we place it under a, as we move forward with this discussion, under this motion, could that lead to us, you know, I mean, I'm sure you hear where I'm headed with this.
Specific versus generic?
Yeah.
I think that first, let's make the motion that we want to have, allow for these solar farm regulations to be placed on there. And then the next step could be a question of whether they're specific or generic. But yes, my belief on that would be yes, Chad.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Take the roll.
Jeanette Johnson.
Yes.
Rosa Cavazas.
Yes.
Terry Robinson.
Yes.
Myron Line Wetter.
Yes.
Dan Bryan.
Yes.
Chad Gerhart.
Yes.
With a unanimous vote in favor, the motion is approved to continue discussion.
Okay, so then the next question, I think then, since Chad has brought up the topic, is whether you want them to be specific regulations or generic. And I guess before you discuss that, let me pull up our current zoning regulations and show you kind of what I have in mind for what that may look like. And these are our current zoning regulations. Now, as you realize, while we're doing this, we do have the intent to do some modifications to our zoning regulations, whether we strike this as a whole and write all new regulations or whether we come in with just very hot-button topics and enhance what we have and kind of rewrite what we have. Those are things that we're going to be doing later. So as of right now, what we're working on is how we integrate solar into our current zoning regulations as they sit, okay? And so what you can see as on our website, the way we have it laid out, is this very first line. If you click on that, it takes us into the book that are the Shawnee County zoning regulations as a whole. These were written in 2000, well, I mean, they were written in 1992, but then adopted in 2006 here for Shawnee County. And by this resolution, there have been a couple of minor amendments since that time, but as a whole, they've stayed pretty much the same since 2006. And so what I would propose is that we look at allowing solar regulations or solar farms to be added as a use underneath ones allowed under a conditional use permit. And so to do that as an example, in RA1 or in RR1, if you click on those regulations or go to the book as a whole, what you see is we have the purpose of and intent of RA1. And then it shows you what is allowed as a permitted use by right. So they don't have to come to us and ask us to do these items. As long as they fit under these categories, whomever is doing whatever it is that they're doing, as long as they fit it in here, it's a permitted use. My recommendation is that we would come down here to uses permitted by conditional use permit and that we would write solar energy conversion systems as one of the options. Now, to caveat that, we would have to separate out by definition the different types of solar energy conversion systems because those that are on a person's house or a person's business that we're calling personal solar energy conversion systems would be a use allowed by right. So if it's one for your house, if it's one for your business and it supports your house or your business alone and you're not, you know, putting it back onto the grid, those are allowed by right. We allow those by right right now. We did not include that as a part of this. But I think if we're putting it in here, that we need to differentiate so that it's very clear to people what that means. So under those items permitted, the personal ones could fall in there. And then under uses permitted by conditional use permit, we would include the other types. And my thinking is that you could have them allowed in RA and in RR and probably in I1 and I2, which are the light and heavy industrial. We don't have a ton of O and I and we don't have a ton of commercial properties. And for the most part, what we do have in terms of those categories, the parcels are pretty small. And so you're not going to see a 200-acre or 150-acre parcel that is O and I or C1, C2, C3. You're going to maybe see 10 acres, 15 acres, maybe three or four. And so a solar farm is not going to fit on those, the way that we are writing them. I think as you're moving forward, you'll have to decide whether you want to allow solar farms in RR. And maybe what I'll do here next real quick is pull up our appraiser map so you can see what that encompasses and why I think that that works. And I'm going to use as an example the one that we have off of Auburn Road. Here's the substation that it's associated with. And here's the solar farm. And our nice updated 2024 maps allow us to actually see the solar farm. So if you look at the zoning here, this is zoned RR. So if you don't allow solar farms in the RR zone, the existing solar farms, I believe the other one, and I don't have the exact address of the other one, but I'm going to go on a limb and say the other one is probably located in RA zone because it's more on the agricultural area next to farms, whereas this one is fairly close to town. So if you didn't allow RR, a solar farm such as this one would not be allowed. And so if you look at how the RA and RR falls around Shawnee County as a whole, everything in the light green is RR and everything in the dark green is RA. Of course, as I back out, it took it off. So if you only allow it in RA, you're only in these areas in the dark green. And so as a whole, I think that you want to be able to allow it in the RR zone as long as you can do so under a conditional use permit because you can take into considerations, you know, size and setbacks. And it may eliminate specific properties just based on the other regulations that you put into play. So I don't think saying you can't do it in RA or RR makes sense. I think you should allow for them in those two zones and not in the O and I or the commercial. Now, I think when it comes to industrial, you probably are not going to have very many really large industrial parcels, so they may not fit on an industrial parcel anyways. Let's give a couple of examples of what that may include. And some of these currently fall, these are industrial parcels here and they fall outside of the city limits. But my assumption would be that depending on what is being put into some of these parcels, if you look at the city limits, they might be annexed. A solar farm, maybe not. But if you put some sort of other industrial building out here, they may, the city may require it to be annexed if they're needing to connect to water and sewer and stuff like that. A solar farm may be different. If you put a solar farm on this parcel based on its location and not needing to connect to water or sewer, it may be that the city says, or we may not, they may not have the authority to annex. So let's scroll in here just a little bit and see the size of some of these parcels. Does that say 425?
Yeah.
So this is a parcel where if you allowed for 150 or 200-acre solar farm, you know, it's in industrial, so it could be allowed. Now again, my recommendation is even within the industrial parks, well, I guess that's up for you to decide. In RA and RR, I think it should be required to have a conditional use permit. In the industrial, I guess you could decide whether or not a conditional use permit would be required based on the fact that most of these industrial parcels are located next to other items that don't require a conditional use permit. Things are allowed by right. And so is that type of use a heavy or a light industrial use that it can just be allowed without a conditional use permit? Maybe that's not a decision you have today, but as a whole.
The one that you just showed us there that was on Auburn Road, how many acres is that one?
I think 15 to 20, yeah. It's small. There, one, the two solar farms that we have now are one-megawatt farms, so they're not substantial. One of the other discussions that we'll be having tonight that I want you to consider and decide upon is size. I think that it would be very helpful for the public to know what size we're looking at considering as you move forward so that we don't have a lot of public comment focusing on these 1,500 or 2,000-acre utility-scale farms that we just aren't going to consider. I think that, you know, as we're moving forward and you make these, you know, temporary or brief interlude decisions, that it helps the public know what it is that we're thinking as we move forward so that they're focusing their comments and their thoughts on what we're actually talking about. And so, yeah, that one, I think, is just a, like, 15 to 20-acre.
Could you email to the commissioners the requirements that we made on that Auburn Road project? Because none of them were on the commission at that time.
Uh huh, yep. We absolutely could do that.
Because that would, I think, help with a starting point on some of those ideas.
Yeah.
Is that an evergy?
Free State slash evergy, uh huh, yeah. It was done as a group, I don't want to call it MOU, but like a...
Kind of co-op.
Yeah, co-op. They were working together to get it done. I think, because it's an evergy substation, but Free State wanted to do it. And I think that there was a purchase of land and then a rent lease type thing. And then eventually, I believe Free State is supposed to be taking it all over as a whole.
Is that just the one on Auburn or?
There's that one on Auburn Road and then there was another one on... Yeah. North. And it was a tad bit smaller. Now, both of those were right next to a substation. And the argument being with that is that you have to be close to those substations to get the highest advantage of what you're capturing. The further away you are from the substation, you lose that energy as you get further away. And it's probable that any solar farm that we have now is going to want to be located either very close to a substation or at least to the transmission lines that they could tie into. So I'll write a note, email the cup for solar farm so you can see conditions. Okay, so Chad, did that help answer your question in regards to what I personally am thinking about how we would move forward with that?
Joni, are you thinking it would be allowed as a matter of right in all zones or were there zones that you were thinking?
No, it would not be allowed by a matter of right. I don't think it should be allowed by a matter of right in any zone. I think that it would be a permitted use only under a conditional use permit in RA and RR. And then in I1 and I2, I would consider it being allowed by right. But the problem is, is that then we can't regulate, well, I mean, we could. We could put, we would have to put regulations within I1 and I2 that specified certain setbacks that are special to solar versus any other type of heavy industrial use.
And what about personal?
Personal are allowed by right on any of them. And that will just put in all of the zones as allowed by right for the personal ones, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Yep. Let me pull up again the sheet that I had going because I have definitions on there that we've already... So these definitions are ones that we utilized in my staff report that I wrote when we did the moratorium. And so how we have... And so how we have personal, and, and these can be changed. These are not set in stone. Um, we may decide that the way that we had written them for the staff report and for the moratorium isn't the best way to proceed forward. But the personal solar energy conversion, conversion systems are ones. And, and each of these, it's not just the solar panels or the arrays. It's any combination of all of the mechanical, structural, appurtenances, buildings, anything associated with a specific uh, solar system. So the combination of all of that, where the primary purpose of the electricity generated, created, or collected is for the consumption by the individual residence or business. And it's located on the same site as that solar energy conversion system. It's not for transfer or sale to a third party. Net metering could be allowed. And what net metering is, is if, you know, they get their, all the solar that they need, and they're no longer using it, and they have extra, they can sell it to evergy or Free State or whoever. And so then in theory, some of that does go back to the grid. And again, you guys could say net metering is not allowed. But we have not regulated that on personal residences or businesses to date. I'm assuming that there are people who utilize that for the purpose of being able to probably pay for some of their solar panel uh, investment. Um, you know, anything that they're able to get by selling that. So that's called net metering, and a lot of communities allow an individual or a business to net meter. Um, and they see that separate from commercial or utility solar. So those would be your individuals who put solar panels on their own house. Um, an example of a business that did this, uh, Hills Pet did this, and they have a pretty big solar farm. But they don't sell that to other people for their use. They use it to run their own company. And they're attempting to go net zero, what's the word? Yeah, net zero. They're attempting to go that direction where they're covering and, you know, able to generate all of their own needs. And so they have a pretty substantial sized solar farm, but it's not considered limited scale or utility scale, cause it's just for the purpose of their own company. Now, do they get to net meter it if they have excess? Yeah, I mean, if they want to, at this point, we haven't regulated that they can't.
And the VA is another example.
VA is another example, however, that one falls within the city limits, so um, in that case, we don't have the authority to regulate those, cause whatever we're regulating is only for the unincorporated Shawnee County. So if the city of Topeka, or Auburn, or Silver Lake, Rossville, any of those cities wanna have their own solar or even wind regulations, they can. Um, within their city limits. Yeah, but VA is another example of that right there off of gauge. They have a substantial sized one that supports theirs, their hospital. Um, okay, so then we defined a limited or community scale solar project to be a group of people or entities that join together to create, collect, and use a, a solar energy conversion system with all the appurtenances, et cetera, that they may need. However, it supports those groups, and so this can include a municipality or a co-op. And so in my mind, this is where we see the Free States. Although they're also a public utility, but they're, they're an electric co-op. So technically, they fall under this limited scale solar conversion system. It supports their people only. It doesn't get put onto the big grid that gets used and transported wherever, anywhere. It's just within their own little grid. Um, you know, if you have a subdivision who wants to put up a solar farm to support that subdivision, it would fall under this. Um, a school system, if they wanted to put up solar to, to support their own set of schools. In that case, you may have to, they may have to transport it to different properties, depending on the layout of the school system. Um, but there could be groups of individuals, just, you know. They come together as a group, you know, out off of Forty-Fifth and Shawnee Heights Road. There's, you know, a, an area of homes. What if those people wanna come together and create their own little solar farm? That's what would fall under this limited community scale. Um, commercial scale then, by the way we defined it, is any solar energy conversion project whereby it is collected to be sold or put into the larger electrical network. And so this is anything that goes onto the big grid. Any big company coming in from out of state that says, hey, we're a private entity, we wanna put up a big utility scale solar farm on these thousand acres in Shawnee County, and we're gonna tie directly into the grid, and um and it'll be part of the, the big system. I suppose, commercial based on the way that we have it defined could mean even potentially more than that. I think that that's where we have to really watch our definitions on how we, what we allow. Um, notice that by defining these, we didn't put a size requirement on any of them, cause we felt like, you know, a lot of times you think utility scale, it means someone coming in wanting to do fifteen hundred, two thousand acres, twenty-five hundred acres, whatever. I think that you can have a commercial conversion project that's much less than that. Um, and so we didn't put a size requirement on these original definitions. We just did them as a whole. And that's a decision that you guys have to make. And so in my mind, I think that by allowing these projects, we could allow limit, the limited scale and the commercial scale, and just put a size requirement on it. Saying that it can't be more than a maximum of so many acres.
How much did you say the one on Auburn Road was again? I'm sorry.
Like fifteen, twenty.
And then the one at Hills?
Theirs, so theirs is a personal, so they don't have a size requirement. I can pull it up. It falls all with on their own personal property. Yep, on their facility. So theirs maybe like three or four acres as a whole, like when you look at the size of it. But really, all we did in regards to that was um permitted like a personal, I mean, okay, I have to turn off my zoning maps.
They added another building or something. But they also put a lot of the panels on top of
Mm-hmm.
Parking.
Yep.
Uh, spaces, covered parking spaces.
If I can find.
I had to like try to visualize that.
Nope. Usually I can see it off the map. So that's theirs right there. It's not huge. But it's also, as a part of that, when, I mean, it's setback, and we, when they did theirs. Theirs is a PUD, and so when they came in to modify their PUD, they included the plan for the solar as a part of that. So in essence, we did consider it under that plan, and their master plan modifications. And the discussion at the, the time of that was that it's so far away from any other residents, that it really wasn't gonna have an impact on anybody. So we did have a little more oversight on that one, I suppose, but it, that wouldn't necessarily be the case on others. Okay, so I think as we move forward. Kind of your first discussions. I think you need to move, make decisions on both limited and commercial scale. My recommendation would be that you allow them with conditional use permits under RA and RR. And I would recommend at this point that we allow them with conditional use permits under I one and I two. And I think that that could be up for discussion at a later date if you end up saying, no, we think that I one and I two zoning is sufficient enough to allow it just by right. But I think as of right now, my recommendation would be to recommend a conditional use permit on all of them. Um, I would also recommend that you not allow these types of energy conversion systems in any other zone. And so that would encompass all of their zones. M one, M two, O and I, all the O and I's, all the commercials. Open spaces, other things like that. I would recommend that you allow personal solar to continue on any zone, as long as they apply for proper application and approval of a building permit. Okay, so a couple of other, do, do you guys have any questions or discussion on any of that before I move on to any other topic?
Before you, we, I know we'll probably circle back to it, but on the, why are we not talking about commercial? I mean, if you have a commercial business that wants to put solar panels on top of it, why are we just automatically excluding them?
Um, so typically, they, right now, they can put them up right now. Um, we don't have any regulations that don't allow a business or a home to put up solar panels. They're allowed by right, because we don't disallow them. And as we went through the original moratorium. We did not, we specifically did not include personal underneath that moratorium. We said that they can, can continue to utilize building permits to put up solar panels to support their own business or home.
Okay, so we're not excluding them, they're just falling under where the residential
Mm-hmm.
and where potentially, or at least right now, industrial's falling. Cause industrial, they can.
No, industrial, the way that industrial would work, if an industrial company put up solar panels to support their industrial current industrial use, they could put them up.
Yeah.
So if it was, um, I mean, some of this is in the city limits, so it's a bad example, but if it were Mars or Walmart distribution, or Target distribution, all of those are in the city limits. But if they wanted to put up solar panels to support their business, they could. Or if Forbes Field wanted to put them up to support their air force base, they could, because they're supporting their own entity. It's when you are doing it to either sell for a commercial purpose to make money, or when it's a, like a bigger neighborhood, or co-op, or entity that's supporting a group of entities and people and businesses.
But the only problem with that's the net metering. I mean, in a sense, it could be a problem.
It could be. I don't, you know, as of right now, we don't really have, the thing is, is we don't have any way of monitoring that, if they're net metering. I don't, we would have to do a bunch of research to find out how, if we put a prohibition onto net metering, how we would attempt to regulate that.
Well, I mean, if you're, I mean, if you're what we're talking about there, you know, Walmart Distribution Center or something like that can put in a whole bunch of solar panels that they say is to support themselves.
Right.
Which, in a sense, they could put in a whole bunch of extra ones that we would never know if it was to support themselves to put it back on the grid.
Just for the sole purpose of the net metering?
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, each of these topics we're discussing, you can make small votes and kind of move in some directions, or you make no votes at all and just kind of absorb it all tonight, and think about it for another later date. But you can always come back and say, you know what, I really think that net metering's an issue. I think we need to have more discussion on that.
What's permitted by right under I one and I two?
Okay, you're gonna go down a little bit of a rabbit hole by this. I'm gonna show you I two right now.
Yeah.
So the way that, on the, on the heavy end, on I one and I two. The very first thing that it says is the permitted uses are everything in I one. So this is I two, and it says you can do anything that's included in I one, plus you can do these types of things. Pretty much in I two, you can do anything. Except for living houses. There are a lot of houses within our I one and I two zones right now, but those are all grandfathered in. They were built and put in when those were residential parcels, and then at some point, the county, well, in the nineteen sixties, the county came in and rezoned large chunks of area into I one and I two for future industrial use. But the houses all remain so long as they're continuing to be used as such. If they tear the house down, if they burn, they can't rebuild it. Um, there is an allowance for caretakers, so if you have a, a I two use and you need to have someone staying there for a night watchman, that is allowed. Kind of an old concept, but again, these were written back in the nineteen nineties, and so, you know, how that may have changed since then, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna proffer at this point, but there's also a couple of provisional uses, and what a provisional use is, is it's a little over and above what would be allowed by permitted, but they may just have to comply with some additional regulations, and as long as they're complying with those regulations, it's still a permitted use. Our provisional uses are a little bit strange, cause there are some items that they have to come in and get approved by the governing body. And to me, that's not a provisional use, that's a conditional use. And so when we redo the zoning regulations, we'll probably rewrite how it sets out. I mean, it either needs to be permitted, or if it's a provisional use, it needs to just be something that's easy for them to meet, that they don't have to come for, to our office for approval. Um, and then a conditional use. And then items that are conditional uses are some heavier extraction, gravel pits, raw material type things, and sanitary landfills they require to always have a conditional use permit. So pretty much anything goes in I one or I two. And so then you, you then have to go down to I one to see, well, what is it then that's allowed in I one that's also allowed in I two? And it does list off, you know, construction, dairy, demolition landfills. Laboratories, manufacturing. Wrecking, uh, you know, junkyards, railroad facilities, warehouses, welding. Storage units. If you didn't know, all storage units in Shawnee County have to be at least I one. We have people that call us every week, wanting to put up an RV and boat storage facility on their RA agricultural farm. And you can't do it. It has to be at least I one to get storage facilities. So Chad, here's, this is your best answer to what's allowed. Now, also allowed in I one, the very first line item is anything allowed in the C four district. And if you go look at the C four, anything allowed in the C three is allowed, and then it starts, so it goes all the way down. So once you're up at that top, pretty much anything all the way down to commercial is allowed. So from C one all the way up. And actually, I think even in C one, you're allowed to use it for O and I. So I would say from O and I, if you're up at that I one, I two, you can do everything all the way down to O and I one in those zones. So there's some pretty significant things that you can do in I one and I two. I don't know if a solar farm is any worse than any of these items. Like a public use facility, a substation. In, a substation in RA or RR requires a conditional use permit, but once you get up here to you know, the industrial, it's allowed by right. And so if a private or public utility structure, except for the fact that we have a moratorium right now. A solar farm could probably go in I one or I two by right, because it's considered a private or a public utility structure facilitating that transmission, distribution, and/or collection. But the, uh, moratorium prevents it right now.
Do you think that was the intent when that was written?
I don't know, cause, you know, in the nineties, were wind and solar
A topic.
A topic? Probably not. It was, I mean, we utilized that more for water towers, substations, transmission lines.
Would it be helpful for them to see like a map of where all the I one and I two? Like, is that possible?
It's, um, well.
I know you probably.
It's hard. Because once you get far enough out. Because once you get far enough out, I'm gonna take off the city limits. What I can show you is, right now, a lot of your, where you're at right now, physically right now, is I1, I2. But it is in the city limits. We are located in the city limits. And so this is also a little complicated because our I1 and I2 is so similar to not having any sort of zoning that it's hard to see. But like, all of this light gray stuff in here is I1. If it's a little bit darker, so it looks like maybe this, maybe I2, it's a little bit darker, but this is all I1. And then you see, if I click on the city limits, you can see how much of that then rolls into the city limits. There, that helps. So the gray, not in the city limits and not in the green, that's industrial. Where we have Futurama stuff over here, up in here, these you can see are industrial. So this is Southeast Second Street-ish area right there, in Seward. So we have industrial in there. Now, also, a topic of discussion, which I have noted a little bit further, is floodplain. Whether or not we would allow solar farms to go into the floodplain or the floodway. And so in some of these industrial zones, the, the industrial sites were probably there before the floodplain maps were put into place. But if those uses were to be discontinued, they may not be able to put something in to the same extent that they have now. Because floodplain regulations are much more strict than what they, when, before they existed. So taking the floodplain back off, those gray areas are industrial.
Does the, does the cup on the 20 acre farm of Free State set any precedence for anything going forward?
Nope. And we specifically, when that one was decided, Commissioner Cook specifically added a condition that those solar farms would have to, they would not be considered grandfathered in. And once we put the, the solar regulations into place, they would have to come into compliance. Now, I will tell you the biggest part that they will struggle with, probably none of the areas other than setbacks. And so you, when we get to that point, we're probably gonna have to have some discussions about what they're gonna be required to do in regards to setbacks, because depending on what we lay down as a setback, if they don't comply, it could require them to be eliminated altogether. And I don't know that that's the intent of, I think that Commissioner Cook just wanted to make sure that they don't just say, oh, we don't have to worry about that because we were in place beforehand. He wants us to look at those conditional use permits again and say, well, they don't comply with these regulations that we're putting into place, so are we gonna specif- specifically line item that they're exempt from those, those specific rules? And so we will have to see those again.
So while we're on where we're gonna put them, I guess, trying to figure in where the public is on, on these issues. Is there, is there some wisdom, and this is a question, maybe restricting them to I1 and I2 with the idea that if somebody wanted to put in a wind farm elsewhere, they could go for-
Not wind farm, just solar. Yep, yep, I know what you're saying, but I wanna make sure that the record says that. We'll have a lot of people that are like, what?
Yeah, yeah, that, that was my bad, I'm sorry, yeah, solar. That, that they would have to then rezone to one of those two, and they could do that anywhere in the county? Is, I guess, is there any conventional wisdom to that, so that there could be more public input? Because there would be a rezoning process. That's my question.
Um, okay, so if we allowed them, whether it be through a conditional use permit or by right, in I1 or I2, what you're looking at right now would be only a few areas right here by the city, right here by the city, and like, right up here by the city. So there would be, all of the solar farms would then be really shoved right up against city limits. Um, I think that if we were going to suggest that, that we would probably be, it would probably be a good idea to go to the city and say, do you have opposition to them being this close to the city limits? Is there an issue with that? Because as they annex and expand, if you have a big solar farm right next to the city, that could potentially significantly impact how their expansion could go. And since it falls within the three mile radius, they may wanna have input on that anyways.
Yeah, but the other part of my question is, is then if they wanted to be in the county, in an area that's zoned ag right now, or any other zoning, that they, they would have the ability to then rezone the property?
Okay.
And then the wind farm go, I, I, I guess what I'm, the reason I'm asking that is, is if the public, I think, understands that they have more input and rezoning would require more input, is that a wise thing for us to think about it for county?
Right. So historically, historically, the answer to that would be, it's easier for us to condition and control a conditional use permit than a total rezoning. And I'll tell you why. Because when, if you have it as RA and RR, and you put a conditional use permit on that property, once that solar farm is gone, and that use as a conditional use permit is gone, what you have left is a zone of RA and RR. And solar farms may be there for 25 years or 30 years, we don't know that they'll last forever into infinity. If you rezone to industrial, and then you have a solar farm on there for 25 or 30 years, after those 25 or 30 years, that solar farm leaves, any use that's allowed in the industrial use could go on that property. So the argument that I would have if I were a neighbor is that it's actually more dangerous to force them to rezone to I1 or I2. And I, as the planning director, um, would be less inclined to make a recommendation for approval if the rezoning is to such a, a heavy use, because once that solar farm is gone, they could put whatever they wanted on there, and as we looked at those zones, I2 allows you to use anything, and O and I, commercial, I1, I2, without restriction. And so that's where we tend, even with the storage units, my recommendation with storage units tends to be that we not just do a straight rezoning to I1 or I2, that instead you rezone to a PUD. And then we limit it, like, with I1 or I2 underlying zoning, but we put a condition that the only use allowed is a storage unit or a solar farm. But then rezoning to I1 or I2 really doesn't make any sense. Really, what makes more sense is for it to be an allowable use with a conditional use permit under one of those lighter zones. Does that make sense?
It, it, it does. I just, you're already kind of doing this process with storage units. I just was trying to see if we could adapt it to-
And my recommendation, when we redo our zoning regs, is that we allow storage units in lighter, um, uses. I think that limiting them only to I1 and I2 is too much, because people want and need storage units, but if you have to do it within I1 or I2, you're really limiting it to specific areas on where you can do it. And I think that we can better put conditions on them, and, and this applies to a lot of different uses. It's easier to a, allow something with a conditional use that we can over-regulate based on whatever it is that they're doing, than to say you can only do it in these particular zones. It gives us better control.
Okay.
Yeah. Other questions? So really, um, when it comes to the industrial, then you can see down here, we have some industrial zone as well, but really, that's it. We're very, I mean, very small spaces of industrial zoning. And when they did the, the industrial park over here, I mean, that was a very hot button topic at the time, and I'm sure a lot of you remember the arguments that went into play about turning, you know, that prime farm ground into industrial parks. And some of it has been used and has moved forward, and others still sits as farm ground right now. Okay. Okay, so some other counties have limited distances from city limits. And so if we allow them in industrial, this would kind of be the exact opposite of what some counties have done. Some counties have put a two to three mile limit from any city limits to keep them pushed out further. So, you know, that is one question that I had. I don't know that we need an answer to that tonight, but think about it. Do we wanna force them to be located away from the city limits and in more agricultural areas?
From, from what I understand, with Cedric County, and I did talk to the county commissioner, uh, his name was, uh, David Dennis.
Okay.
He was the one, he's no longer a commissioner there, but he was the one involved in writing their regulations. And, and, uh, their major concern was putting solar farms where there's possible ability to expand residential. And so they kind of made their, their regulations more in terms of where housing and development might go in, in their county as, as the city moved out. So I, I don't know how you incorporate that into what-
Well, it's, it almost kind of exactly as you say. I think that there should be some conversation with the city of Topeka specifically, and then we may wanna reach out to, you know, Auburn and Silver Lake, et cetera. For those of you who live in other cities or have close communications with them, you might reach out to those governing bodies to find out. Right now, the only city who has a three mile radius is Topeka. So we control zoning and building permits all the way up to the city limits of Auburn, Willard, Wash, what am I saying? Rossville, Silver Lake. So we go all the way to the city limits. In the city of Topeka, we do the building permits and the zoning, but we don't do the subdividing. And so they're gonna wanna have input in their three mile radius, and the places that they have deemed to be their urban growth area, where they do plan to expand over the next 40 or 50 years. And they're gonna wanna know if we're gonna permit a, a solar farm in those areas. And so it may be that we say, well, we'll stay out of the urban growth area, or, you know, I think saying that we'll stay out of the full three miles is probably too much, because there's a lot of area within that three mile that they will never expand, um, but-
I assume the I1 and the I2 is not in their urban growth area?
I don't know. I would have to look at the, the UGA to be able to tell you that. I don't know that for sure. Now, you have to understand that their urban growth area isn't necessarily just for residential. They may very well wanna take industrial area, because they, I mean, industrial buildings can produce a lot of tax base.
So if we, if we do talk about the urban growth development area, then we would need to make sure that we define it exactly.
Correctly. Correct, yes. Yeah.
Back on that city limit thing, um, I know we're not talking about too much now, but just so I can think about, is it even legal or possible to say, make one rule for Topeka, since they already have their three mile buffer and they take more seriously? And different, cause some of the smaller towns, I mean, I could see someone, one mile outside of a small town wanting to put one up. Can we make two different rules, is what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'm not advocating or proposing that yet, I just-
Yeah. Um, another thing that I think that we really need to consider is the Tall Grass Moratorium, and I'm gonna pull up our map again so you guys can see where this is. Now, the Tall Grass Moratorium is a ban on wind farms that was instituted by the state. We don't have anything to do with it, it's by the state. And what happened was back, probably back to Zimmerman versus Wabunsee County, I believe. Governor Sebelius, before she was a governor, was part of, or was brought into part of the arguments that were being done on Zimmerman versus Wabunsee County. So in Wabunsee County, there was a consideration of wind farms. They were going through all of their process of deciding whether or not they were gonna have wind farms, having a moratorium, doing all the things that they were doing, just sort of like what we're doing now, but years ago. And, um, at that time, they decided to put in a moratorium and ban it. Well, it kind of kicked off this discussion about wind within the Flint Hills, because Wabunsee County falls within the Flint Hills. And at that time then, when Governor Sebelius was the governor, a, a ban was put on certain counties within the Flint Hills, saying you're not allowed to have wind farms in these counties. Years passed, and Governor Brownback, I believe it was Governor Brownback, expanded it and encompassed additional counties. And so now there's like 18 counties that as a whole, or in part, fall within that moratorium. And that was, again, um, not approved, but just kind of confirmed by Governor Kelly. So over the years, they've continued to say, no wind in the Tall Grass Moratorium. Uh, and I say this because Shawnee County does fall in part in that Tall Grass Moratorium. And when we have looked to see what that looks like it encompasses, it is-
Does that apply to solar as well?
It does not. It just says wind. So I'm, I'm bringing this up so that you guys can think about it. Do we want to keep the area that's not allowed to have wind, whether we have a ban or not? It's not allowed anyways in this area, but do we want to say also, any of the area that's within the Tall Grass Moratorium would also not be allowed to have solar? Because it is, I, in theory, part of the Flint Hills. So the area that I see on the Heartland map goes from Highway 24 and follows the highway. My lines are not exact, because, but it follows Highway 24, and then it comes down here to I70, and then follows I70 over to here, and then goes down to, along K4, as it goes along down in here. So all of this area to the west and in between that green, that all, based on what we have seen, is part of the Tall Grass Moratorium, and wind is not allowed in there. So the que- question that I'm posing is, do we want to apply that to solar as well? And say we are not gonna allow any solar farms in that area? Food for thought. Wind and solar are two different entities, they're two different types of facilities. You know, I don't believe that they've, I, I'd have to do a little more research to see if there's any moratoriums throughout the Tall Grass area.
I mean, that's a big, that, I mean, I've seen the whole map of the thing, it's-
It's huge.
Yeah, it's huge. Are there any solar installations inside of it?
I would assume there are, but I don't know the answer to that exactly. That's what I'm saying, I'd have to do a little more research to see if there's been any utility solar. Cause I know like in, Coffee County is looking at putting regulations up, and, um, Pot County did. I don't know if Wabunsee County has looked at solar. So my thought is, is that, that it does not prohibit solar. But it would be a method of us limiting a certain area, if you would wanna consider that. Okay, so the next on my topic was whether or not we should limit or ban solar in the floodplain or floodway. And so let's go back to our GIS map. And I'm gonna clear off that line. Give my maps a minute. As we're waiting for this to load, the reason why this is a topic for us in our office, we are the floodplain managers for Shawnee County, for unincorporated Shawnee County. So anytime anybody wants to do any development, and it falls on a parcel that has floodplain or floodway, they have to come to our office to get additional permits. So any sort of building, all of the solar panels themselves, if they are ground mount solar panels, not just on a roof mount, they would have to come in and get a building permit, but they would also have to get floodplain development permits. And if we did massive farm- And if we did massive farms, we would have to have extensive permit, permitting for each of the items that are looked at or considered. But we would have to check with the state to see if the state would require permits because not only do we at the county level require permits, but the state requires permits on certain types of actions. And then if you're close to anything that is operated under the, the Corps of Engineers, they require permits. And so it's possible if they went into the floodplain or the floodway that A, either based on regulations that we wouldn't be able to allow them to be used, or we would have to restrict them so heavily and then they would have to have a lot of permits that it would just turn into a major project.
Can you educate me, why are we restricted? Why is that restricted so heavily? I mean, I think of it more of an insurance thing. You put it there, you lose it. It's, it's insurance on them, but why are we as restricted?
Safety. So, anytime you put anything in the floodplain or the floodway, if you, um, let's just go with an accessory building. If you put an accessory building in the floodplain, what you're doing is the water that used to be able to free flow through there now has an obstruction and has, the water has to find another way to go. So, for every obstruction that's in place, it changes the water height because it's no longer able to just cut straight through. Um, and so, and not everything has anchoring properly or proper buoyancy. And so then the other problem that you run into is if you have a bunch of stuff on your property and you have, you're in the floodplain or the floodway, that water comes through, everything that you have there just goes whoosh, and that water is heavy and dangerous. And then you have a bunch of floating items. So, if you have a bunch of solar panels in the floodplain, if they're, you know, just on T-bar anchors, will the floodplain waters just pick them up and wash them away? And then for everything washed away, it runs into people, cars, places, causing more and more damage. And so that's why we spend a lot of time, and, and it's, you know, it's kind of from the top down. Uh, FEMA is the top level that directs what the states have to do, and then the states direct what we have to do. And then we are the local action people who enact what it is that has come down from the top.
But if you want to build a house in the floodplain, you're, I don't know exactly, but your finished floor level has to be
One foot above base flood elevation.
base flood elevation, which would be the same if you stuck a.
Um, it's a little bit different for accessories. So, like if you have a carport and, uh, you know, think a gazebo or a carport that's open, you can put that in the floodplain and it does not have to be one foot above BFE because the water can flow in and around it.
So, there'd be a consideration for that on the solar.
They may not need to be one foot above BFE.
One foot above. Yeah. Got it.
Yeah. But they could, I mean, that is going down a whole nother ballgame of regulations. But there are, you know, if it's not a building that people are living in, um, depending on if it's in the floodplain or the floodway, you can also do what's called a no rise certificate where you have an engineer come in and say, this item being in the floodway is not going to cause the floodwaters to rise. And so it could be that solar panels are a type of thing, depending on where they're located, that wouldn't cause floodwaters to rise. But then they would have to, every time someone put one in, they would have to get engineers to come in and do all of the reports to show and prove to us and sign off on the certificates that it wouldn't have that effect, or else we can't approve them. And we've enacted floodplain regulations, um, as the state has asked us to do, and we participate in programming that gets, um, those within the floodplain who live in the floodplain and have insurance that get them discounts. And so if we don't comply with those, then we can get kicked out of programs and it can cost our taxpayers.
So, is your recommendation to keep a solar installation out of the floodplain altogether?
As of right now, that's my recommendation. I think if you wanted to consider it and we wanted to dig into it deeper, my recommendation at this point is that we would not have it in the floodplain or the flood, definitely not the floodway. The floodway is the most, like the purple along the Kansas River. That's the closest to, like you, flooding there is probably gonna happen. When you get to that dark blue, it's a little more likely. The light blue still has a really good chance and it's probably more creeks. Uh, the gray area is a very, very low chance and you can still build and do whatever in those gray areas. And the floodplain maps are changing. They were last created in two thousand eleven and we think by two, twenty twenty-seven or so that we'll have new floodplain maps where stuff is either expanded or, uh, le- lessened. But we do have a lot of floodplain in Shawnee County, a lot. And of course, as soon as I scroll out, it pops away. So, I can't show you the nice big picture, but let's look at the north first and. So, purple, like I said, is floodway. I would absolutely recommend none in the floodway. Uh, the dark blue, I would still say probably not a good idea. The light blue maybe, but they're gonna have to get permits. And it's just a lot of extra paperwork and money and work, and I don't know. Um, one of the other discussions that I had even, um, with our public works director had to do with prime farm ground and also the Kansas riverbed. And so being able to identify, you know, do we need to stay out of the Kansas riverbed? Cause, you know, is that dangerous close to water tables? And that's the other thing with floodplain, you know, where are the water tables? If you have a bunch of appurtenances in the, the ground, are they leaching off and creating issues with soil? Are we taking what is known to be better farm ground and taking it over with solar panels?
Who decides if it's better farm ground or not? I mean, what's the, what's the?
Probably say that there's, um.
The state has.
Yeah.
The state puts out maps, uh, the Kansas Department of Agriculture. It's in the comprehensive plan for Shawnee County, those ma- at least as of when it was read up, the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so all of the blue, purple, dark blue and light blue is all floodplain. Obviously, you can see a lot of it runs along rivers and creeks. And then the Kansas River. Okay, so I think probably one of the last topics maybe we talk about tonight so that we don't overwhelm ourselves, and I want you guys to do some thinking, um, would be maximum acreage. And you don't have to make a decision tonight, but this is kind of where my recommendation is at. Um, maximum acreage size for the entire project. And when I say the entire project, that means not just the area of the solar panels. That means everything within that boundary, including setbacks, including any appurtenances, roads, buildings, anything that has to encompass has to fall within that total project area. Um, and, I mean, I'm thinking no more than a hundred and fifty to two hundred acres. Although, you know, whether or not you go bigger or go smaller, you have to remember that the, the farms that we've approved already are like fifteen to twenty. Um, and so this, this is a lot bigger. I definitely don't recommend going bigger. Well, my recommendation would be not to go bigger than two hundred. Now, to that end, what you also have to remember is that you can also put distance limitations. So, you know, say for instance, you have, okay, we're gonna allow two hundred acre farms. What you don't want to have is four projects come in with four two hundred acre farms right next to each other, just under different parent companies. And so another thing that a lot of counties have done is put distance requirements between each one, where you have at least a mile or at least two miles between each one. Um, there's been some discussion between myself and Kyle whether we have the capacity to say, okay, we're gonna allow up to two hundred, but we're not gonna allow any more than five in Shawnee County, or ten, or whatever the total may be. I, I just don't know exactly how over the time, we would necessarily regulate that. We, you know, once you approve one or two, then, you know, do one or two fall off? Do one or two more come along? You know, maybe it's better to say either a maximum, you know, we'll allow up to two hundred acres and Shawnee County can't have more than two thousand acres of solar farms total, and they all have to be at least two miles apart. I mean, we may be limiting it so much that you couldn't get ten of them on there. But I do think that we need to set maximum projects so that we don't end up with fifteen or twenty two hundred acre farms.
Yeah, I thi- I think kind of what I've been talking with some people, the, the main thing is wherever they are or however big you allow them to be, is that the, they're close to where they can be, they're can, to transmission lines. And you, you had brought that up before. That was something that, that I was glad you, you brought up at the very beginning. And because one of the things that I would be incredibly concerned about, and we were talking about battery storage, and typically, a lot of en- these solar energy companies, as I understand it, if they can, if they can harness that energy with battery storage, they, they will try to combine those projects. Then you get into the idea, the, the issue of what happens if those batteries catch on fire? Because they do not, you don't put them out with water. You just keep cooling them down till they, till they run their course. And so then you're getting into a whole lot of other things that, you know, like your, your water district providing water, your, your fire, you know, district providing fire protection. And so, I mean, as we look at that, we're, you know, there's, we could limit the size of the farms maybe based on, you know, how far we're gonna let them be from transmission lines and those connections.
Yeah.
I think the, the public too, um, one of the things that, that was mentioned was having transmission lines put, you know, along their properties when, when there are transmission lines for the solar farm and they have to give up that right of way.
Mm-hmm.
And so making them closer to transmission lines would be one way to.
Well, and right now, eminent domain, that came up was eminent domain. And right now, at this moment, the way that it is, is that really you have to be a public utility or a government to be able to exercise that eminent domain. I think that there's a much more limited scope of what it is that would be allowed for eminent domain in the private sector. Now, there have been discussions about opening that up. And if that opens up, I hope that people really pay attention and talk to their legislate, you know, their legislative representatives about whether or not allowing private entities to, to do eminent domain is a good idea because the people who are really going to be looking at utilizing that are, you know, wind farms, storage facilities, battery storage facilities, anybody who needs to get their product from their location to the big grid. And if they are able to operate and utilize eminent domain to do so, that will be much more complicated. And I agree, Terry, you do have to really keep the wind and solar and battery storage facilities close to transmission lines, if not to substations. Um, but again, depending on if you're linking into the grid or if you're just supporting local projects, would kind of depend. And so if it's a subdivision that's just supporting their own subdivision and not selling elsewhere, it wouldn't have to be next to a transmission line or a grid because they're not putting it on to the big grid. It would just be those utility scale projects that would potentially do that.
They would have to use somebody's transmission lines.
They would, part of the project would have to be to, but they're not, at that point, they're not considered transmission lines. They're called feeder lines or, there was another word. Kyle, do you remember what they were?
No, we had it in the definition.
Yeah. And I didn't copy and paste all of those, I don't think. But they're, it's, they're feeder lines to get it to the location, not necessarily transmission lines as we consider them where it's going from a substation and transporting it across the country or continent or to homes. Um, transmission collector or feeder lines. Tie-ins. I think that, I'm trying to think of what Josh Swatty called, he was talking about tie-ins.
Yeah.
There's some.
They're the same.
All the same thing. Yeah.
I mean, it's the same line. It's just, transmission line has a particular, it's defined in federal law, so.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, so, and that's why they go through the three-year process to get connected to the grid is there's a whole, but yeah. They're really only fed, the federal government, correct me if I'm wrong, but they regulate essentially from the transmission line or the substation to, and it's not very long. I mean, it's like.
Yeah.
And so that's when they stop becoming transmission lines and something different.
So, we, so we would need to almost identify that, wouldn't we, or not?
I think Douglas County did, and it's in an email.
From the KCC. We did get, so when we were originally looking at this moratorium, we did reach out to the KCC to get some input and they provided us some language. And, and they said, now, look, we only oversee stuff that falls under the KCC, the Kansas Corporation Commission, you know, the stuff that they regulate. Um, you know, there's only certain portions of it that they are in charge of. And the transmission lines, they do, but those collector and feeder lines do not fall under their purview. And so he, the guy that had reached out to us had said that, you know, they had made some recommended changes to the one for Douglas County on how to word it. And, you know, anybody that falls within a project, so, you know, as I was saying, a project area, if you have a project boundary and you have a, you know, a big line around a certain project, does everybody within that project then fall within the conditional use permit? Are they all leasing properties that are working with them? Are they getting paid for it? You know, are feeder lines or transmission lines going underground? And so making sure that whatever happens within that project area is encompassed as a part of the conditional use permit and considered. Outside of that, if they've connected to the grid, we don't have authority to regulate the, the transmission lines or the grid themselves.
Okay.
So, in terms of size, what do you guys, what have you guys been thinking? Is one fifty, two hundred too big? Have you been thinking size-wise is more like the fifteen or twenty that we've got?
How, how did you land on maximum size of one fifty to two hundred?
Um, just kind of based off of definitions that I've read in other counties. Um, a lot of other counties go like fifteen to twenty acres or smaller are just considered, you know, little garden farms. And then from fifteen or twenty up to like two, two fifty, maybe kind of that me- middle ground, and then two fifty and up. But to me, two fifty and up is very extensive. Like, that's a big difference of what a two hundred and fifty acre farm looks like and a twenty-five hundred acre farm looks like. Um, I was thinking more along the lines of that area because you don't have a whole lot of parcels that are that size. Most, if they want to get a hundred and fifty to two hundred acre farms, they're probably gonna have to get multiple owners involved. Um, also, as my recommendation with even in allowing up to a hundred and fifty acres or two hundred acres for the total project area, that you put a limitation of you can only have seventy percent of that be solar panels, because we have to make sure that we have enough space to allow for good setbacks and making sure that, the, the solar panels are compacted within there. And so even, you know, if you have seventy-five percent solar panels on a hundred and fifty acres, what are you looking at? A hundred acres of solar panels?
Yeah. Pretty significant.
So, you know, and do I mind the, the, the solar farms? I think that the ones that we have right now are very low impact. They, you know, they've been put up. We don't hear about them at all. We don't hear any discussions about them, cons- concerns, complaints. Um, you know, so those haven't been an issue at all. I don't know what the magic number is.
So, here's such a mechanic, so they've gotten off into small, medium, large.
Yeah.
Now, large getting, so they actually have kind of different for the, for each size.
And that's also with the way that we have them defined, we may have to change and not, no longer call them limited scale and commercial. We may just have to say personal and non-personal, whatever we call them, and then just put a size limitation on them. I don't know if we want to get into the nitty gritty of whether or not it's a community or a subdivision or a utility. I think that no matter what, we want to have certain setbacks. We want to have certain size requirements, no matter what that may mean.
I do think you're right. I think topography and parcel size, you know, what's available is gonna be very limited to get really. to get really anything over two hundred acres, I would imagine. Because you get into that size, you're going to be getting in somebody's farm ground somewhere. And I don't think that'll, that will be advisable.
Yep, for sure, the, the parcels that are the, except for maybe some areas where you have a lot of rocky terrain, um, and cliffs and hills and such, those may not be as suitable for solar to begin with. But they're also not going to necessarily be suitable for farming, maybe for ranching and cows and horses and sheep and goats and stuff. But, yeah, I mean, we do have some that are substantial in size. And one of the things that I can provide you guys is we did have our GIS mapping department as a part of this early on, tell us, well, how many, you know, how many parcels do we have that are three hundred or more? How many parcels do we have that are one fifty to two hundred? And we have a large number that are very small. But, you know, if a solar company is coming in and really wants to put a two hundred acre farm, and they found a hundred acres, they may go around to all of the surrounding neighbors and say, hey, we want to buy you out to put solar panels. I just don't know what that looks like from private entities at this point.
And one, what that looks like when they start cutting down trees?
Yeah.
That's another thing.
Yeah.
Did you say early, like last meeting, that there were, before the moratorium hit, there were some proposals or people that were coming forward, companies that were thinking about doing solar, or was it just wind?
No, uh, we have not heard anything on solar. W- we do know that there were leases out there in, eh, in some areas of the county that were wind farm people who were leasing land. Um, I had not heard that there were any that were solar. Now, it doesn't mean that they're not there. Um, there could be leases. I would assume that they've recorded those leases with the register of deeds. And so if we went and did a search, we could probably find them. But we're not personally aware of any solar leases at this stage. I did have a company kind of quasi-reach out to us after our last meeting, looking at a couple of parcels that were over six hundred acres, saying, hey, can you get us contact information and help facilitate contact with these people to do a, a utility scale solar farm? And I said, nope. We have a moratorium. I will not help that. And at that point, I didn't want to say, hey, we're probably going to limit the size and utility is probably not going to happen here because you guys haven't voted on that. And at this point, I still can't say that. Um, you know, at this point, it's just we have a moratorium and we don't know what the answers are going to be just yet.
Have there been any?
To have Joni also, um, email her list of things that we may need to, we need to make decisions upon. And then at our next meeting, come prepared with your ideas on, on those so that we can start making some decisions, unless there's something you want to make a decision on this evening.
I, I don't know that we can make a, a good decision, but in reading all the different resolutions and, and regulations from the different counties, there, there's a lot of similarity. And you had talked about cutting and pasting.
Yeah.
You know, but I, I still think we need to put these discussion items in, in that cut and paste specifically for Shawnee County.
Yeah.
Yeah, you look at them, there's, I mean, you, I, there was legal aspects involved. And that's, and I think that's, you know, other than, I am not concerned about solar itself. The biggest concerns I ha- I have about it is if, if you try to do battery storage and then, you know, make sure what, and I'm sure this is the legal part of it, to make sure that whatever we create is, is, uh, will stand up under, under legal stress. And so from what I understand from Sedgwick County is that that was a big item for them was when they wrote it, to make sure that, that it would, it would stand up under any legal stress that was placed against it, so.
So in, in regards to that as well, um, some of the discussion that we had when we were putting the moratorium into place is you, as the planning commission, and then also the board of county commissioners, kind of sit in two different roles. The role that you're doing in writing regulations is what we call or consider a legislative action because you're creating laws. Um, when you take those laws and then implement them, you're sitting in more of a quasi-judicial position. So when you consider a conditional use permit or a rezoning case, you're making a decision on a quasi-judicial basis. And you have more, c- you have more factors that are, have already kind of been set out there through our Golden versus, you know, Golden versus Overland Park. And in those factors, you look at, you know, a variety of different things. And the courts have found that if you have considered all of those things, or, you know, whether you say yay or nay on them, that you are making a decision that is not arbitrary. It is reasonable. And as long as you've looked through those and you say, well, yeah, it looks like it's fit with the golden factors, that, you know, complies with all of these different, or when you look at it and say, nope, it doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood, then you've made a reasonable decision and it's not arbitrary, and the courts typically uphold those decisions. So then on the, the contrary to that, when you're doing a legislative action, you don't have that same set of factors to consider. Now, when you look at the golden factors, and you look at some of them, you can say, oh, well, this still can apply. And so you can use some of those golden factors as kind of a basis to say, well, you know, what should we do here or not do there? But your decisions are legislative in nature and the legal consideration of that is a little bit different.
Energy companies have money.
Yep.
That's all I'll say about that.
Yeah.
Been watching too much Landman.
So, um, nicely enough, I had these all numbered and I couldn't get my margins and everything to match up. But apparently Word decided they needed to be bullet points instead of numbers. And now my margins all line up perfectly, so I don't know how that happened. But I have, th- this is to me, as I was going through regulations, I was writing notes about things that I found were important. And I started writing them down and putting them in this list. And as you can see, the list is extremely extensive. And I didn't even, once I got down here, all I was doing was writing items. I wasn't even putting any sort of information about them. And I will tell you right now that this is not everything that we have to consider. Um, it's, you know, it's a, it's a major task to undertake, and I think that you had some good discussion today. And so, yes, I will send this out to you guys, and I will try and keep updating it as I add stuff in. Um, so for next meeting, we do have an April meeting. Today's March, right? We're in March, we do have an April meeting. We have our rodeo.
Yes.
And did we have, is that the only thing?
That's it.
Okay, so we have the rodeo.
Guess so.
Um, so Mr. Cherviarti's got his stuff refiled, and so we will hear, uh, Noe's rodeo case in April. Um, and so that will just re- remember that that's going to involve a, a public hearing that's historically been a little bit contentious, and so we will have some stuff around that. We can, um, also after that is over, have additional discussion on solar. But my question for you guys at this point is what do you want me to do for next month? What, you know, where do you want me to go? What do you want me to look at? What do you want to discuss at the next work session on this so that I can be helpful in moving this forward?
It might be helpful to, uh, since, I'm, I'm pretty sure you're the best expert we have in here. If you can prioritize, like, what are the first four to five things that'd be most beneficial for you to get a vote on to keep moving forward, so we don't get stuck discussing flood claims and we don't even know how big or what we're going to do in these zones? So, uh, kind of prioritization of what we're needing to vote would be helpful.
Okay.
At what point do we have to extend this? Like, when are we, when do we need to vote on extending the moratorium? I mean, it doesn't feel like we're going to get this, I mean, do you think we're going to get this done inside the moratorium?
Uh, based on tonight, no.
Yeah.
I mean, unless we're here for like three hours every time. And, and once I get some stuff written, it may be easier to break it down, but I need to know what direction you want me to go to know what to write. And, um, I think that we had good discussion tonight, and I have a better idea of kind of what you guys are thinking. But no, there's no way that we will get this done by the end of the moratorium. Um, my hope has always been that we would have it done by the end of twenty twenty-five. But I believe the, I believe the moratorium was signed in June. And I have the date written down of when, and I can't remember if it was here or not. I don't believe it's here. So we, I, I do have the date that it was approved, and I believe it was in June, and it's published shortly thereafter. And so it took effect as of the publication date. And then, um, once we, but we need it to be extended prior to the publication date. So let me go, I can look real quick.
What's it take to extend it? Like a whole public hearing and every, no?
No, um...
Nothing crazy?
I think that you just need to do a motion and a vote. We should have public comment on it. So, yes, have a, a short little public hearing where you, I think. Don't, I mean, since we did a public hearing to approve it, do you think we should do a public hearing to extend it?
I think based on past precedent. I don't know that we're required to, but yeah, it's probably a...
Frankly, I don't think we really needed to have a public hearing to do the moratorium. But we did because we wanted to make sure that we got good public input on what we were doing. Um, and so our, our position has always kind of been that we would rather overdo due process than underdo it. So I think that a public hearing would be a good idea.
Well, obviously, you know, this is one of those, uh, projects where, you know, you ask the question, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time, right?
Yeah.
Because, and so we're, we're, if we had five things starting at the top and moving down in, more into the details, that would allow, and if you sent those out to us ahead of time? And then we, we could have time to work on those, so we could get some of that done.
I mean, it feels like we're probably not skipping any months' meetings anymore with trying to do this, correct?
Probably not, unless we have a specific time that...
I mean, I guess, I don't, I was just headed down the path, but you know we're having a meeting for sure in April. Do we just stick it on that agenda?
So it was approved on June thirteen, and then it was published on June twenty-four. So we need to have a decision back from the BCC prior to June twenty-three. I mean, so I would have to look at the calendar to see, that means, when we put things on, so even if we, we had a hearing on it here and you made a motion, like, the way that we do it now is typically, like, if we have March ten is our planning commission meeting, we don't take it to the BCC until April thirteen. However, that's not by resolution, that's because we have, uh, you know, protest petition timeframes and we have things that have to get done between those two meetings. On a legislative action like this, like a moratorium, if we heard it at your May ten meeting, I believe it's May ten.
May twelve.
May twelve meeting, then within a couple of weeks or a week, I could get it on the agenda. But because we've done it as a public hearing, I think we need to allow enough time for notice to be put out. And so I would say that at your May twelve meeting, you need to make that decision. And then that gives us time to, you know, put out any proper notice and get it onto the BCC because the twenty-fourth, June twenty-fourth is a Tuesday. And if it went into effect the twenty-fourth, then, you know, we need to be before the twenty-fourth. So no later than June nineteenth. I think we need to have something official by the BCC.
Are there any other questions or any other business to come before the group?
I have a non, non-related issue. Um, the, the decision that we made last time with the, uh, rural water district?
Mm-hmm.
That went to the camp, board of county commissioners, what was the end result of that?
They haven't gone.
Oh.
So it's a plat. What happens with plats is once it gets considered here, then they have to go through the process of getting it considered by the county surveyor, by, um, our mapping department and get all of the boxes checked and make sure everything is correct. And then once they have that done, then they bring it to us for the, uh, chairperson to sign and myself. And then I have to put it on the agenda for the BCC to hear it. And so we haven't gotten it back from them yet. So it hasn't gone to the BCC.
You haven't gotten it back from the water district? Or from who?
The water district has not brought us the Mylar. So once you guys consider it, they have to take what you have approved and take it to the county surveyor. And by law, the county surveyor has to review it and look at it and make sure it meets all of her standards and that none of the descriptions need to change or layouts, that nothing needs to change. Um, once she has done that and signed off on it, then it goes to our GIS mapping department, and they double-check all of the legal descriptions and property owner names and make sure that it meets with whatever it is that they need to, to finalize. Once that has happened, then the owner of it, so the rural water district brings it back to my office, and myself and Jeanette will sign it as the chairperson, and we get it on the agenda for the BCC to consider it. The BCC has to sign off on it when there's things like dedication of right of way or easements, anything like that. That has to be approved by the BCC. Um, and so we have not gotten it back in my office for us to put it on the agenda for it to go back to the BCC.
Any other questions or business?
That was called a little bit ago. We asked if there was any, before this discussion, we asked if there was any public comment. So I'll leave it up to the chair if you want to. Well, so if you go back to my, that's why I specifically said in the presentation that, um, I'm going to go down here. So F, public comment on non-agenda planning and zoning items. And then we had the work session, and we said here, please note that we will allow public comment only during the designated time on the agenda. We do not have a specific time for public comment or interaction in regards to tonight's work session. The purpose of the work session is to allow discussion and brainstorming. We will have additional work sessions and time for public comments and, at later dates. And then also, we will have public hearings later once we start making decisions. And if you have any comments that you would like to email to us, then I can present those to the planning commissioners, so.
If there's no further business, then I think we stand adjourned, unless I have to ask for a motion. I don't think Robert's rules.
No, not for adjournment.